Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag at which the allegiance could be, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Each of you have an invitation to an event with eight to 12 churches coming together in the park, March 27th, a Saturday. And everybody's welcome if there's a church out there that wants to be involved. They can call me at 238-7005. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you and praise you for this great nation we're privileged to live in. And Lord, first of all, we lift up our leaders in Washington. And Lord, because we've all sinned and fall short of your glory, we put ourselves in this prayer with them. Lord, that you would change their hearts in any way that needs to be changed and reveal to them your direction, your plan for their own lives, for the country that they're working for, and, Lord, for each of their families. Lord, for this meeting here today, we thank you for the leaders before us. We ask you to protect and lead and guide each one of them. Give them divine direction for this meeting. And, Lord, help each of us to discuss the issues before us with respect to everybody involved in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. City Secretary, the first item?
First item is the mayor's report.
Okay, because the MPO presentation's gonna take a little while. I think we'll go with that and then move on to the other stuff. But let me make the housing authority announcement. The reappointment of Ruben Herrera and Abi Lopez on the housing authority. And now we're gonna go to the MPO. Mark's gonna do a presentation of what the MPO's, what it's about, synopsis of it, anyway.
I'll be brief, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, honorable city commissioners, I'm Mark Lund. I'm with the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization. We'll outline what we do and what we're working on. Next slide. There are 386 MPOs in the United States. All of them have an approved work plan that's reviewed by the Federal Transit and also the Federal Highway Administration. This is the one that we're working on this year. Next slide. We conduct the transportation plans for the Brownsville urbanized area. There's not, we try to have all the entities work together. We don't have a separate plan for the port, one for the county. All the entities, Techstat, the city, the county, Los Fresnos, Rancho Viejo, the port, the school system, all of them are working together. The City of Brownsville is the host agency and is also the fiscal agent. Next slide. Our staff, we have four staff members. I'm the director. Alfonso Viejo is our map guru, and he's here tonight. He does a lot of excellent work. Alicia Justilian is our secretarial person. Tom Logan at Buss. Could you go back? I'm sorry. Hi, Mr. Kabler. The typically, 100% of the expenses are reimbursed, they're federal monies. The MPO cannot do any lobbying. We can share information, and we do that. And so that information that we provide, you can use that on your trip to Washington. But we're not involved in lobbying. Okay, next image. We do planning and programming. The programming means that we look at the available funding. Usually it's typically federal funding. And then we select what can fit within the fiscal constraint. The prioritization of the projects, that is the main decision-making process or power of the Policy Committee members. Next. We have to comply with federal regulations. All of the federal projects, whether the ones that have been happening for the last three decades, whether the widening of the expressway, the pending projects, the widening of the West Maté's Bridge, the Veterans Bridge in West Maté's, West Rail, all those projects have to be included in the MPO's TIP or MTP. MTP is our Long Range Plan, Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And the TIP is the acronym for the Four-Year Plan, the next four years. All right, next image. This is our Long Range Plan. This was adopted in December. You can see the entities, the city, the Chamber, the EDC, the Navigation District, the two other cities, Advisory Board at the airport, Cameron County, and Techstat. You can see the Policy Committee members. We have 13 members. The quorum is seven voting members. All right, next image. This is our representation of, in our 25-year plan, the improvements that we have scheduled. We have these loop, the 40-some-odd million dollars on State Highway 550 or FM 511, as everybody knows it, that's about done. We hope to widen 1732 from two lanes to four lanes. A widening with a divided highway with a median on US 281, a major hurricane evacuation route. Also, you can see the toll project, the one that everybody agrees on, which is State Highway 550, the truck route north of the Rio de Sol area. The, let's see here. I'm gonna shake this little thing there. Anyway, it's over there by the port. You can see a little loop there. That route is a three-mile route primarily for trucks. And the RMA got the money because the MPO appealed to the Texas Transportation Commission, and they're funding that, and that's something everybody's in agreement on. Next image, please. These are pending projects, our multimodal terminal. There's also some rail improvements at the Amito Switchyard, which is funded by the Harlogan MPO, but it's listed in our plan because it's in our geographical area. An additional span, two lanes at the Veterans Bridge. Proposition 12 monies to widen FM 3248, West Rail, and also Morrison Road. I think the Morrison Road Fonzie, where we talked to an FHWA official, should be any day now. We hope that that comes through. Next image, please.
Mark, real quick, sorry to interrupt you. On the West Rail, there's two, there's two different lines.
Two different segments.
What is?
There's, they list the bridge going over the river separately from the rail link. But it's all one big project. Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, no. Let me ask this again. The West Rail, the two sections, this is not West Rail, and then the West Loop, West Parkway toll road.
West Parkway is listed in the MTP, but they will have to comply with the FHWA environmental justice requirements. So the MPO did include to adopt that. That was the only item we had a debate on, and one member voted nay. So it did pass, and it did get included in the MPO's Long Range Plan.
And when was that? When did that take place?
That was December 9th, Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, we had a meeting.
That's the second Wednesday of every month, isn't it? The second Wednesday of every month?
The second Wednesday typically, yeah. The MTP, I've been with the MPO since 1994. The first year, a consultant firm was used to put together the MTP, the Long Range Plan, and do all of the work essentially. Five years later, we have to adopt it. Every five years, we use a consultant firm to do travel demand modeling and to do some maps. And then in '04, we all did it with in-house staff. It's all reimbursement of federal money for our, and then just now, this year, we did it in-house. And in large part due to Alfonso Viejo's help with the mapping. Next image, please.
Mark, real quick, I'm sorry to stop you at this point.
This won't take much longer.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll be happy. These are, I don't wanna go through all these fundings, but we have to know all these categories. Next image. Next image. This one, CBI, that's the one that I mentioned for 281. And I hope you folks, when you go to Washington, that we see that we get some of that money in the next federal bill. And I was in contact with the city manager I know on that issue, so I hope that's something we can make headway on. Next issue? Yeah, next slide, keep going. Some of these, like the Transportation Commission on the strategic priority, the East Loop, that's a project the county and the city are working together, and they hope to get pass-through funding. I think the project call just went, was issued, and the county's gonna hope to get 70, 80 million dollars to advance that project.
Explain what pass-through money is. Explain what pass-through money is. Explain what pass-through money is for those.
Yeah, that's confusing, but essentially what it is is the city and the county would borrow money, presumably against the bond, the revenues that we get on the Veterans Bridge. You build the project, and you have an agreement going in with Techstat ahead of time that they will reimburse the two local entities based on the amount of traffic. You know going in what they will pay for a minimum and a maximum. And then depending within that range of traffic, they'll pay you an annual fee for 20 years or so based on, and so in essence, it accelerates the project. We take some of the risks by borrowing, but you know going into it what your deal's gonna be with Techstat. So that's unusual financing and...
And it gets a project built.
Yeah, it's, we'll see. I hope, we tried before, we didn't get it, but I hope that, we're working with the county to help them on that. Next slide, municipal projects. We list them in our Long Range Plan. Next slide. The American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, we had 7 million approximately for West Rail, and then that 30 million I mentioned on that toll road over by the port. Next slide. I hope not to take too long. I know you had some questions. Next, next image. Overweight truck fees, same thing, we have to account for that. Next image. Proposition 12, that'll help us with 3248. Next image. Next image. Yeah. And then the 15-year period coming up, we expect to get in all these categories about over 200 million dollars. Next image. In the following 15-year period, we expect to get 253 million dollars on the different categories. The rehab, obviously that's for the Techstat system to maintain it. Next image. Our Long Range Plan, these are the things we have to account for, a lot of federal requirements. Next image. It's not a wish list. We have to use reasonable expectations on the financing. And some of these things are uncertain. We really don't know whether the new federal bill will include the CBI monies that just go for the Techstat districts on the border, the Far District, Laredo, El Paso. And that's why your trip to Washington's important. Next image. These are things that are pending in the next year or two. West Rail, the bus multimodal, East Morrison Road, Veterans Bridge. Also, there's a rehab project that's underway now over there by the port. Next image. Bus, the transit element's part of our plan. Next image. A lot of times what the MPO does takes a long time. We did this study, spent about 100,000 in 1996, and then years later, the 100 million was spent to widen the expressway. We looked at the ramp reversals. This is when I began to get a better understanding of public involvement. My job's not to convince people whether something's good or bad. My job's to get them to the meeting, get them educated. They have their opinions, yea or nay, and then some policy decision-makers make decisions. So we don't try to convince people. We just try to get them into the process, get them involved, and then they can make up their own minds when they have the information, whether they like something or don't like it, or whether they wanna make a comment or not make a comment. Next image. This is an in-house study that we did some years ago. The MPO looked at a corridor. We can do corridor studies by involving property owners. We got some of the right-of-way donated for free. Now that our study is done, it'll be up to Eddie Santian at Engineering to work with property owners. But the MPO's able to lay out some of the parameters on corridors development. Next image. We just did a big land use study. Alfonso, I'd like you all to have a copy of our report. We looked at different scenarios, such the business-as-usual or sprawl scenario was Scenario A. Scenario B was more intensity and land use of density. And we estimate that the three communities, Brownsville, Los Fresnos, and Rancho Viejo, could save about 900 million dollars on infrastructure costs. And in terms of our highway investments, whatever the scenarios, A, B, or C, it really doesn't make a big difference in terms of the MPO plans, our delay. You look at the population of Brownsville in 2030, and under Scenario A versus B, it's a difference of a minute or a minute and a half of travel time. So it's really insignificant. The big difference is on the scenarios would be in terms of your infrastructure costs for building additional PUB, water and sewer, fire, and police coverage. So if you have questions about that study document, let us know. Next image. This is our thoroughfare plan. We protect the city's right-of-ways when roadways are developed in the subdivisions. We also coordinate with the county and their thoroughfare plan. Last image. We're working with Cameron County on a hazardous cargo riding study. We're gonna have some public hearings at the end of April. Also, we're doing a bicycle and pedestrian needs assessment. We'll be kicking off that meeting tomorrow at the library at 6:45, Brownsville Main Library. Anybody's welcome to come and be part of that committee. Last image. You had questions? Commissioner Kamriel?
Mark, one of my, I guess my question was if the MPO voted to support the West Loop, West Parkway, and City Commission about a year and a half ago voted not to support it, how far does MPO go and look at what the City Commission did to say, you know, we were against this, against any type of toll road in our community? Well, how far do you?
The person who spoke against it was the county commissioner. And it cited the equality of life, as I think of a reference in the, your resolutions.
Well, how far did you go as being our MPO director?
I mentioned that in my individual assessment, that the big issue that I look at is the access at the other commercial nodes at State Highway 48, FM 802, Morrison Road, 3248. And that under the RMA proposal, there's no access. And that would really severely hurt the city's ad valorem and sales tax revenues. So that's an issue I think that the Commission needs to look at. Along with the West Brownsville issue, it poses a lot of deleterious consequences for the city. One of the things that's unusual on this RMA proposal, and I've thought about it for a long time, it seems very difficult to understand. How can, when we don't have a huge amount of traffic on Central Boulevard, how can there be an economic justification to do it? And the reason is, is they're looking at a 50-year period. And in most planning, you don't, you look at a 20- or 30-year period. But if you're looking over a 50-year period where Brownsville's population will go beyond doubling, you can do a project and lose money for 20 years, and then in the third decade, start to make your money. So, but in terms of the, I work for anybody and everybody on the Policy Committee. I don't, I don't, you know, try and persuade one person versus another. I work for all of you. And so, you know, I'm a resource. If you have questions, I'm ready to meet with you anytime.
I urge everybody to tend, but that's the 2nd Wednesday. This is not a workshop, Mark.
Right, right.
But if anybody has a brief question, real quick, so we can move on.
But I mean...
Anybody else? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's go to the Commissioner's report. Commissioner Hacketson?
I'm on path.
Commissioner Kamriel? The voting, let's, we have a couple of minutes to talk about the Biggest Loser. Commissioner?
I wanted to invite everyone to this coming Saturday, the next two Saturdays coming up are the midway point of the Biggest Loser challenge. And so the 20th and the 27th are particular big events. On the 20th, Suclinica Farming Yada's sponsoring an activity day at Linear Park adjacent to the Farmer's Market. Thank you. Including a station where kids can play Wii, music, exercise classes. And our speech speaker, or featured speaker, is a man named Danny Cahill, who won season eight of the National Biggest Loser, losing 293 pounds. So it should be a really fun day and quite inspirational, and bring your kids and enjoy the park. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No problem. This past, this past Saturday, we had, well, I wanna thank all the participants that came out and walked with me on March the 6th. It was a great, great time. I wanna thank Commissioner Gowen and our Channel 12 folks and everyone who participated foray. I wanna thank Jason Hiltz and his staff for walking, but also for providing the waters for the event. It was very, it was very much needed, and it was a, it was a great event. I really, really enjoyed it quite a bit. So hopefully we get to do it, hopefully we get a chance to do it, to go out there and walk again. This past weekend, we had an anti-graffiti mural project complete on 401 East Jefferson. It's the CJ Grocery Store that many of you all might be very familiar with. But we brought about 30 or 40 kids and with adults, it was probably about 50, 60 people that worked all day from 8:30 to about 5:00 PM. If you haven't gone by to see the mural, please go by. A lot of the kids from Cummings worked real hard. We had three winners that will be receiving a cash prize. I wanna thank the city's help for this. But I also wanna thank Officer Castillo, who created the initiative and had the support of Lieutenant Etheridge and Chief Garcia. They did a fantastic job coordinating and making this all happen. I also wanna thank Principal Gonzalez and Principal Longori at Cummings Middle School for allowing their kids and us to be a part of something that I thought was very special. These kids painted their drawings onto a building that was lent to us by Mr. Medina, who's the owner of CJ Grocery Store. And it was just fantastic to see all the kids Saturday morning, you know, put their hands on a wall and paint and do all the things that they did was really, really amazing. A lot of work, but it was very fun. And so I think we learned a lot. I think the kids learned a lot about themselves and about not tagging and not, you know, not placing graffiti in other buildings. I think they really kinda had a sense of ownership of that community store. So I wanna thank all the kids, all the volunteers, and also Home Depot for the grant, and Lowe's for giving us a grant as well. And last, this Saturday, we're gonna have a senior day. And basically what we're gonna do is we're looking for volunteers to come help clean properties of senior citizens. We're gonna identify at least 15 to 20 homes of the elderly in Brownsville that need cleaning, whether it's, you know, to remove a tree, or plant something, or pick up trash, or help to remove something that's been there for a while. The city, in partnership with Healthy Communities in Key Brownsville Beautiful, is taking on this project as part of the Great American Cleanup. And so if any of you all know of an elderly that needs help cleaning their yard, please contact the city, contact myself, and we would be more than happy to go out there with a weekend and help them out. So again, if you all wish to participate, we'll be meeting Saturday at 8:00 AM at the City's Recycling Center with ESD on West Elizabeth. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chirari?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna comment, a couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of going with Mr. Ayala and Mr. Cowan on behalf of the city to Mexico City. And we were invited down there by the senator for San Luis Potosí. He had come down about a year ago and visited and wanted to increase trade and tourist relations with Brownsville. Had come up with the Brownsville Visitor Convention Bureau, the Destino-Brownsville Plan. And they came down, and we had a meeting for them at the Museum of Fine Arts. It was a very nice event. There were members from the port, there were members from the Brownsville Visitor Convention Bureau, a lot of different people from around the city, from JIBIC and different organizations. And we really tried to extend and show the people from San Luis Potosí that Brownsville wanted to work with our neighbors in Mexico. I was very surprised that he remembered many of us and invited us down to Mexico City. And they had a proclamation for us at the Senate there. And we have that coming up fairly shortly. But it was, it was very interesting to learn about the interest in relocating to the Rio Grande Valley by many of the people in Mexico. Obviously, we've heard about some of the issues in Mexico right now. But the potential gain for our community with income, with people who are educated and able to provide services, and the financial wherewithal to assist us was very eye-opening. And I was very pleased at also the discussion about people who still just want to travel, even with all the economic troubles that we've heard about. And I know that we were all complaining about some of the sales tax issues. But the desire for many people in central Mexico to come up and continue to shop and to plan trips to shop in Brownsville, and so it was a very worthwhile event. And I wanna thank Mr. Ayala, Mr. Cowan, Mr. Tripp, and everyone who took the time out to participate in that and for their, just their service in that. And also the people from San Luis Potosí, because they were enthusiastic, to say the least. Now, as Dr. Cowan had mentioned, I mean, Gowen had mentioned, on March 27th, we're going to have a Biggest Loser event at Dean Porter Park. And that's gonna start at 9:00 in the morning, and it's gonna go to roughly around 11:00. And Mr. Kang from Kang's Taekwondo has been gracious enough to offer his services. His school will be out there. He will be giving a demonstration and teaching some very basic moves as well as calisthenics that anybody could do on a daily basis, along with, you know, basic exercises at the park. It should be a good time. Mr. Kang, obviously, is a highly qualified martial arts instructor. He's one of probably the only people in South Texas with a ninth-degree black belt in Taekwondo. He was a bodyguard for the Korean...
President. So he has, he has some understanding of the concept of martial arts, and he will be there. I will be there as well, but I think I'll just be watching. And recently, the mayor, Mr. Kabler, and I had the opportunity to visit with Leadership Brownsville. And really enjoyed the participation. And I urge other people to apply for the program, to get involved. We just recently had the first round of elections, and we need to get people involved and active in local politics. Because the best way to improve our government is to have qualified candidates. And programs like Leadership Brownsville, other programs where people can get involved and they can see that just one person can make a difference, I think are very important. And I commend them for their participation. And I wanna thank them for coming down to City Hall and giving us the opportunity to speak to them. And then the last thing I...
And then the last thing I want to talk about was United Brownsville. We're going to have a meeting on April seventh. It's gonna be a workshop for the, the new committees, and that will be occurring over at IBC Bank. It is a workshop, it's not necessarily a, a formal meeting, it's more of a discussion on how things are going to get done, but I did want to keep people posted on what was going on there, so that if there are questions in the future as to what is happening and how things are progressing, obviously, our, our hope is to have transparency and to keep people included and to continue the communications between the different organizations. I think it's a must, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have proclamations, Shen Agins, Irish Pub and Grill. Who's here to receive it? Are gonna come next, maybe? Okay, so we'll table that, and we'll do it next week, okay? Or next week. Destino-Brownsville?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Mr. Ayala's here. I don't know if he has the proclamation that was awarded to the city of Brownsville.
Please, let's go.
If y'all want to get down, it's, it's kind of a, a little backwards, because actually the, this is a proclamation that is being delivered to the city of Brownsville from the B.C.B., and also Senator Alejandro Zapata Perigordo from San Luis Potosí. And so, Mr. Ayala is here with the proclamation that we received from the, the senate in Mexico City, and I will read this, and you will forgive me for my pronunciation, and it states... El estado de San Luis Potosí y el senado de la República Mexicana, ortega, el presente reconocimiento a los distintos ciudadanos de Brownsville, Texas, Estados Unidos del Norte America, y miembros de Brownsville Convention y Visitor Convention bureau señores. And there's a list of the names of the persons. El señor don Charlie Kabler, el señor don Ralph Cowan, el señor don Anthony Troyani, el señor don Tim Trapp, señor don Eduardo Figueroa, señor don Tony Rodriguez, señora doña Patty Ayala, y señor don Mariano Bean Ayala, the Brownsville Visitor Convention Bureau, por su, por su decida participación en los eventos Destino-Brownsville en esta ciudad y como miembros fundadores del inicio de las relaciones multidisciplinarias entre nuestras respectivas comunidades, que ellos resultados habrán de beneficiar a estar y futuros generaciones, ortegado en San Luis Potosí, a los, a los viernes diez del mes de junio de dos mil ocho. No, it's in cursive. Atentamente licenciado Alejandro Zapata Perigordo, senado de la República Mexicana, por el estado de San Luis Potosí, y licenciado Juan Salvador Zarte Booker, notario público. And I was just very impressed and very honored by the kindness and the generosity of all the people that were there and their, their true enthusiasm for the city of Brownsville. It was, it was a really nice trip, and they were very enthusiastic about coming to visit and meeting with everybody here, and I want to thank you all, and on behalf of them, Mr. Ayala, Mr. Cowan, and everyone else, I'd like to present the city and the mayor with this plaque.
You know, something like this is not a one-time event. It's an everyday event, and Brownsville, since I've been mayor, has been working with Mexico, building alliances since I got elected, because I believe in the importance of those alliances and the importance to have good relations, good communication, and to welcome our visitors shopping, or investing, or just good friendship, and to keep our culture and our traditions alive. So this is not just one-time event. It's something that we must work on daily, and Ralph Cowan is a good ambassador, so is Tim Trapp, and all the people here, they're ambassadors for our city that come in contact with our friends to the south. Thank you for forwarding that to us, Commissioner Triani.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Let's go to consent agenda items.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Gowen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item five.
Item five, consideration and action to appoint twelve members to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Ben?
Hello, Mayor, City Commissioners. Tonight, the process begins for our Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee. This is the committee that will plan for you, develop a budget for the home, the CDPG, and the emergency shelter grants. It's a process that is tasky and challenging, but we always have a good committee. Here in yellow are the positions that are vacant. Terms have expired, so we need, for those yellow positions, slots, we need a representative that will represent you. The mayor, you need three, three people. Commissioner Longoria, you have Marisol, and also Joe Wallace, that they can continue, they could be reappointed, and I believe they want to continue. Commissioner Atkinson, you have two. Commissioner Samora, Jaime Perez, still can serve again. Can you hear me? And you have a vacant position, and it's your decision if you want to reappoint him, that's your choice. Commissioner Camarillo, Ms. Ana Perez, and you do have a vacant slot. Mr. Triani, Mr. Jesús Quesada can serve again, and you have a vacant position, and Dr. Gowen, you have two vacant positions. I know that you may not have names tonight, but we can continue, or if you can call the people, they can contact me if they need further information, but if, whenever you're ready with that appointment.
Commissioner Longoria?
Do, we need to have the function about for, the applications for these appointments?
Yeah, that would be good, yes.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me tell you, I got my three, but I didn't get, call them to ask if they're willing to serve, and I just got back from Mexico, I was in Victoria, I just crossed the bridge to get to the meeting, so I didn't go home, pick up my, my, my stuff here, so I, I'm gonna wait till next meeting for mine. Is anybody ready to appoint?
And if you could give me names, I can search.
I'm gonna reappoint Laura Cakely and add on Cindy Gilote, she works for the DA's office.
Okay. Their application's already in, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have two appointments by Commissioner Atkinson. Does anybody have an appointment? No?
I do.
You do?
I do. I'd like to appoint Craig Grove. He has an application that's, that's been pending for a while.
Okay. You just lacking one?
Yes, as far as I understand, yes.
So we have, we have...
You have Mr. Jaime Perez, if you wish to continue with, with his appointment, that will be...
Does he wish to be reappointed?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to reappoint him as well.
Okay, so we have two appointments from Commissioner Samora. Okay, based on that, can I have a motion to approve?
And I'd, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Quesada, I think you, Ben, you indicated that Mr. Quesada wanted to serve?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion, I'll keep the other one pending.
Ben, and on mine, I'm gonna reappoint Joe Wallace Garcia, and to replace Marisol Longoria, it's going to be Blanca Moreno, and I'll have her application in tomorrow.
Okay, based on that, does anybody else have any appointments?
I'm gonna reappoint Ana Betis, and then I will find another, another candidate at our next meeting.
For the next meeting? Okay. Does anybody else have any? Okay. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Triani, second by Commissioner Atkinson. Any discussion?
And we're, we're just motioning to get all these in, right?
Yeah.
So the motions tell...
Yes, recognizing all the appointments from the stadium. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Item number six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-ten dash fifteen eighteen, to amend chapter eighteen Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, to amend article eleven Energy Conservation Code by adding division four Wind Energy Systems, sections eighteen dash seven fifty through eighteen dash seven fifty-eight, and dealing with related, related matters.
Good evening, Commissioners. As we discussed a couple, a couple sessions ago, this is with regards to wind energy and just small wind energy, in, in particular with, you know, installing it at your house and, and not the utility scale. We tabled it at that point, and you asked us to go cooperate, cooperate with P.U.V. They are here. We passed out a... Time, if you just want to read the...
Ben, did you get with P.U.V.?
Yes.
They're coordinated with P.U.V., they're here.
They, they favor this?
Yes, they do.
Mr. James McCann is here to give this presentation, if, if you wish.
Any comments?
No.
Any comments about the P.U.V.? None? Move to close. You are permitted with this, electrical engineer Fernando? I just want to make sure.
Mayor and members of the commission, I'm Fernando Sainz, the Assistant General Manager, Chief Operating Officer for the P.U.V. We did work with Mr. Medina and his staff, our staff did, to, to develop this program alongside with, with our initiatives at the P.U.V., so we are in favor of it and looking forward to having some of our citizens connecting to our system.
Great. I just want to make sure, okay. Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Atkinson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is this an action item? Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven?
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-ten dash ten ninety dash G, to amend chapter two, article two of the city code by replacing ordinance two thousand and eight dash ten ninety dash F regarding the preparation of agendas, the conduct of city commission meetings, public comment, and dealing with related matters.
Commissioner Samora, I left this up to the city secretary. You had some concerns, will they address?
Yes, they can address. I do have just one pending concern which pertains to the public comment section on two. Number two, G, which states that an individual wishing to address the city commission regarding a particular agenda item must wait until the appropriate agenda item is read by the city's secretary. I do have a concern with that, because if someone wants to participate in public comment and the agenda item that they're going to address is later or after the public comment period, I...
Well, that should be up to the chair, because some items you cannot discuss. It should be up to the chair. You're, we're not talking about public comments at all? This is going beyond the public comments?
Generally, we, the, the commission has the option to go ahead and open up an item if they wish to do so.
Yeah, but this, this...
But we're putting it down to where it won't be discussed until after the item is read, as opposed to them coming up at public comment period to discuss it and address the item, but they can be recognized by the chair.
Does that, does it say that? Because like I tell, I just got in.
It may need to be reworded a little bit differently. If you like, we can go ahead and make a change.
If we have maybe two of the people coming to talk about an agenda item that is after public comment, they can address that item in public comments? I mean, I have a problem with that.
Well, the way it reads right now, I don't think they would be able to. So if we want to make a change on that, that would be fine, especially if it's not a public hearing. These are for items that are not public hearings.
Okay, I, I think what you're trying to say is that you want the, and I don't have no problem with this. Let me see, I understand you're right. You want the public to have the opportunity during the public comment period to address a certain item they may be concerned about. That's what you're against?
Yes, even if it's after the public comment period.
Even if it's after the public comment period?
Because the way I read it, they can't address any item unless it's already been discussed.
But it's gotta be opened by the commission to address the public. Legal? What's your opinion?
Where's the issue?
Pardon me?
There are issues in regard to public comment?
The public comment during an action item that's, not the public comment period, but consideration an action item that comes up before this commission. The way it states there that the citizen has a right to address that, that particular item after it's been read, my position is that it should be recognized by the commission, opened up for discussion, they just don't have the right to come in and just start a debate.
With public comment, are we talking about just general public comment?
There's two different things we're talking about here.
We're talking about public hearing.
No, we're just, we're talking about the public comments where citizens sign up, they have three minutes to speak, they can talk about an agenda item if they want to, okay? That's one issue.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what I need clarification on, yes. I want them to be able to discuss any item that they wish to in public comments.
Yes, yes, relating to the general...
I have a question.
Yeah, I don't have any...
But see, but that's not what the form says. The form says...
Hold on, I have a question.
Wait, wait a second. The, the commission on it. Okay, Commissioner Triani?
It was my understanding, and, you know, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that if you were going to sign up for public comment, then you should not comment on an agenda item, because you could voice your opinion at that time when there were public comments on a public hearing issue. So your public comment issue should be something that was not related to something that was going to come up later, because that was something that you would bring up that was out of the ordinary or was not already addressed before there was a proper time for you to speak. That was my understanding. I thought that was the way we've been doing it.
Well, I don't have any problem with the public, during public comments, public, during public comments, commenting on an agenda item that's gonna be coming up. I don't have a problem. I mean, if anybody, you know, we could, we could change it, keep it, do whatever.
Well, it's my understanding that that was the way it was done. If that's gonna change, fine, but that was my understanding, so if you're gonna have public comments...
The thing is, we cannot engage at the moment that that's being discussed or in public comment, but we can engage when the, when the item comes up.
Right. That, and that being the whole point, is that you can engage on those issues, and we can engage in public comment, it's just a free-for-all.
Okay, good, well, point taken. Whatever the wishes of the commission?
If I may say something, on that item two G, it does say that the individual must wait until the appropriate agenda item is read by the city secretary, but it also says that the mayor may acknowledge the request for commentary or question, so that if public comment period is over and someone comes up for item twenty or twenty-five, and it's been read, and it's not a public hearing, it's an, an action item, and if they want to make a commentary, the mayor may recognize them.
That's the way I, I understood it to be, but he's, we're talking about the public comment section of, of individuals having the right to, to say something about the upcoming item. That's what you're talking about.
Because that's not the way it's written here.
Yeah, that's not the way it's written, it just reads differently.
Well, whatever the wishes of the commission, it's okay with me. Y'all want to keep it the way it is, or y'all want to change it?
Mayor, right now, the, the public comments are limited to a certain amount of time, in other words, there's a period for public comment, at which time a certain designated group of individuals can get up and, and address the commission. The way this rule is written is that when an, an item comes up on the agenda, then you'd have people making public comments, basically turning into public comments of the public hearing. So the way we're doing it right now is when there's matters that there are public hearings, the public can come up and comment on that specific agenda, and the city charter also guarantees individuals the right to make public comments during a specific public comment period. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that this rule kind of mixes that all up, and then you have people making public comments during individual agenda items which are public comments. And that might delay the...
Very good point, then. So how, how would you word it, then?
Well, I would, I would continue, basically continue to have a period of time to give people the opportunity to make public comments, which is guaranteed in the city charter, as opposed to having people standing up at different periods of time throughout the meeting, and then, I, I think it's better and fair to have an opportunity to sign up this, and you have a certain number of people that can sign up, and people that sign up first can have the opportunity to speak.
So you, could you work on the language appropriate and bring it back next time?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Is that okay with the commission?
Mark, isn't that how it's done now?
That, that is how it's done now, and I...
So then we, we don't need to vote on this, we can just...
No, but the way it is right now is, is changed.
Well, the, the way it is, wait a minute, when you say the way it is right now, what we're doing right now is what I'm talking about. The way it is written in this ordinance is different.
The way this one is written, but, but prior to today, is what you just mentioned, what we've been doing.
Prior to today, what I'm talking about is what we've always done.
And that, and that, and I agree with... And I agree with that, and I think we just should...we should continue that way.
Okay, do you just want to adopt that language exactly the same?
I would use...
There wouldn't be any change.
Substantially the same as we're doing now.
Okay, do you want to bring it back next time and get it worked out right?
I would suggest we bring this ordinance back next time.
Okay. Is that okay? Obviously, this was put on by a commissioner. What was your intent so we can know what you're talking about?
I was asked to support this item only to revise the form to state has the individual made an opportunity to contact the city staff member. That way, we knew that there was some sort of intent to clarify the matter or address the concern, and if it hadn't, then we can address that concern with the appropriate city staffer as to why the concern hadn't been addressed. That was the only thing that I was approving on this, the revision of the form itself to include had you contacted a city employee, who's the city employee, that's it.
So, all we want to do is amend...
Which was a fair thing, that's what I wanted to do.
All you want to do is amend the form, and that's it.
And that was my intent too, but the city secretary is trying to make it better, that's all...so, she went and looked at it and was trying to make it better.
There were some items in that ordinance that didn't need to be there, and I reviewed them with Mr. Chozy.
So, let's give her the opportunity...
And they were internal items.
So, let's work...
But if you want to bring it back, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, let's give her the opportunity to work with Sassi and bring it back, if that's okay? I mean, if she can make it better, I welcome it, okay?
Mr. Mayor, the issue that I have with item G is right now, a certain group of the people have the opportunity to speak, and basically, as long as they speak within their three minutes, as long as they're addressing an issue of public concern, it's their right to address those issues. Whether people like it or not, they have the right to address those issues. The way item G is written, it says the mayor may acknowledge the request for commentary or question, and then it says once acknowledged, the speaker shall come to the designated microphone, which seems to imply that maybe people have the right to speak on the issue or maybe not.
Well, it depends if they're contributing something that would benefit the public good, then the mayor should have that right to acknowledge if the issue warrants it. But it's already decided as far as, you know, there's nothing wrong with the city attorney because she deals with this, trying just to make it a little better. If you would get with her and see if you can come up with something that we can all live with, I mean, I don't think it'd hurt anything, okay?
Well, Mayor, I will say this, that I agree with the city attorney, Mark Sassi, that again, if somebody wants to come up to public comment or speak at...on an item in public, you know, through the open public hearing, then they should be able to do so. They should be able to do both.
I agree, and the way it reads, it reads differently.
And I'll make the motion to table. I'm sorry to close the public hearing. Well, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Let me just say this.
I retract that.
The commission has the opportunity to get with the city attorney and the city secretary and provide your comments, you know, and then they can come up with something that we all can live with. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody else want to say something?
I'm just curious, I was looking at 1090F and 1090G. 1090F had items under B, one, two, three, four, five, six. Why was it removed and will it continue to be removed in the future? One of the things happens to be that items placed on the agenda must include supporting information when presented to the city manager or designees review and signature at the agenda review meeting. One original of each must be presented. That's no longer there. It doesn't say you have to...according to G, it's also doesn't say you have to have the information prior to five o'clock on the website. Why is that no longer there? That's a concern to me because, you know, you would think that you would want to have it there as much as possible so everybody could know it. I understand that the Text Open Meetings Act allows it to happen, allows it to be put place, but it's not there anymore. If y'all are going to make changes to 1090F to make it 1090G, it's pretty much the same as it is right now, 1090F and 1090G, with the exception of that particular thing and also eliminating the...eliminating...oh, gosh, I'm completely lost. Eliminating a particular word. There's a particular word in regards to city commissioners or the mayor disrupting the meeting and an individual, whether they disrupt the meeting and a member of the public. My concern is, is you put added the word offending a city commissioner because later on in the ordinance, it says offending individual or member of the public, as if they're automatically guilty. And it doesn't have that in 1090F. It does now in 1090G. I don't know if there was a particular reasoning why that was added or not added, but it does differentiate the stature of, I guess, the city commissioner or the mayor being above a member of the public for not being able to be mentioned as offending or not offending. With regards to what y'all were talking about with the sort of, the mayor may acknowledge the request for commentary or question. That has been the practice that the mayor will be able to do that, but I like to point out to one particular meeting last year in which George Gavito, who was a member of the Brownsville Convention Visitors Bureau, wanted to speak and actually stood up and said he wanted to speak, but the mayor refused to acknowledge him from being able to speak, and it was just an action item. If that's going to be the practice of not allowing a person to be able to speak because the mayor doesn't feel that his input is important or not important, then I would suggest that the mayor must acknowledge be added as opposed to may acknowledge and to comport or to conform to what the form says that says...the form that y'all...that the city secretary has now developed says you can't use this form. It actually says if you want to use this form for public comment, go right ahead, but if it's an agenda item, you don't use this form, then how is this person going to be able to sign up before six o'clock if they're not even allowed to use the form? And in that particular instance, I think the mayor should or must be allowed to recognize that particular person. The other concern I have is regards to if you're going to change this ordinance again for, I think this is the eighth time you're going to be changing this ordinance, you could allow the same rules for the public as you do for a city...allow the same rules you do for the public for city commissioners. For example, in the ordinance, 1090F and 1090G as well, you have the citizens or the members of the public cannot be using their cell phones during a meeting, but you all can for whatever reason. If it's the cell phones being disruptive, you know, you can, I guess, kick them out. There is no punishment actually, but you all can use your cell phones freely or get up and, you know, snicker or talk. I know during Mark Lynn's presentation, two commissioners were just, you know, talking amongst themselves, distracting, I guess, Mark Lynn or any member of the public from being able to listen to somebody.
But you don't know if they were talking about city business.
It's quite possible they weren't.
You don't know that. If we're asking questions about the presentation, you don't know that, so you're making assumptions.
That's possible, but they were laughing. I mean, is that really...
You're making assumptions.
Why would they be laughing about city business? I don't know. It's just that the fact is that you don't allow the members of the public to be able to make conversation or reframed from conversing. Why is it okay for them to use it?
I'm also a mother, so sometimes I do get text messages from my children.
I completely understand, but if you do get a vibration, you know, exit the room as opposed to using it while you're doing it there. And you're not going to listen to it anyway, but I'm just giving you the opportunity to actually hear me.
Sorry, this is your city hall.
I'm sure.
You have a right to come and speak.
I just like to make sure that...
I have a right to ignore you by wanting to ignore you.
Of course, you do it all the time. It's not a problem.
You are here and you are part of the process. We're listening to you.
I'm hoping you do. I really do hope you do because I'm just...I mean, if you're going to make it better...
Doesn't mean we have to agree with you, okay? If you want to change it, you know, and you want to voice that, you're welcome. Now, what else do you want?
The...there is a section in here with regards to B, agenda item or agenda preparation. It says the city manager, a person designated by the city manager for items dealing with operation or administration of their respective job functions. I'd like there to be some maybe force or strict adherence to this. I know a few meetings ago, I'm not going to say who did it, but somebody came up with an issue that had really nothing to do with their department. They put it on the agenda and they never went to the planning and zoning commission or my understanding is they never spoke to the planning and zoning director or planning community development director. I don't believe it was part of his job description to put an item on the agenda as though he's, you know, he does that sort of stuff. I believe that, you know, if you're going to have to put an item on the agenda and you're a director, you go through your city manager and say, hey, this is the agenda item and not, you know, circumvent, you know, other people's duties or other people's job descriptions. I know that there's some sort of lawsuit, you know, in regards to making personal comments or making comments of personal nature or saying somebody's particular name during public comment, and that's, I guess, it's in the court system right now. I'm wondering if maybe you all could just hold off on it until that decision is made by the particular judge. If not, maybe make the changes that this person is asking. I know, and I'm just making that point because...
So, you're out of the scope of the public hearing?
No, I'm not. The personal nature is still in there. I cannot...if I cannot say somebody's name...
Do we have an attorney for lawsuits? Go talk to our attorney, we can't discuss the lawsuit.
I'm not asking you to discuss the lawsuit, I'm just saying that in the ordinance right now, in 1090G and 1090F, it doesn't answer any of those questions. It still says I cannot mention you by name, I have to mention everybody by as a whole, and it also says I can't make personal natures. Again, they're, you know, they're just snickering and laughing, I don't know why, but they are. But I appreciate, you know, more decorum. I mean, I'm not here all the time, but I know what people see it on TV and it's not fair and it's not right and it doesn't make us look good as a community. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Resti. This is a public hearing for a simple little form that we're trying to change to make it better. You're welcome to comment on it.
Roberto Resti, just real simple about these public comments, okay? One time I tried to get permission from you, Mayor, on an action item, but you denied me because you said I spoke on that particular item on the public hearing, okay? So, you said you can't speak no more on that, theory came up. So, you stopped me, you told me to sit down. I did it. I wasn't going to argue with that point. What is being brought up right now is you can bring up...some people come up here and want to speak on an item agenda on the public comment.
Okay, what is your...in reference to this item right here, what is it that you're suggesting we do? What is it that you want to see done?
Well, it's real simple. If they want to speak on the public comment on the...any item on the agenda, they should.
Okay.
That's very simple, sir.
Your comments noted, thank you.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be...and another thing is, when as a whole, that you do laugh, you put people down, you make terrible comments, that should not be part...
I'm not perfect.
Because you said yourself, this for the people, but a lot of...
I'm not perfect.
Yes, sir. You're not perfect, and you said I'm not perfect neither, but the thing is, you need to respect anyone who comes up here, sir.
You respect it, sir.
And in the public forum, you need to do it.
You respect it.
And they're watching it because they tell me they're not very pleased with you guys.
What else do you have here to contribute to this public hearing?
You need to actually let us speak.
I have a meeting to conduct, sir. Stick to the item. What is it that you want to contribute to this public hearing?
Don't change it. It's all right. Anyone can come up here and speak on any topic on the agenda, and it's real simple. I don't know why she's trying to make it censor us again. That's all it seems to be. It's a censorship about this board.
Can you stick to the...
Yes, but the whole thing is the public comment is...
I'm not trying to censor anything. I don't understand if you didn't hear what I said. I wanted to change the form.
You didn't understand yourself when you speak...brought this item up either, so you're all confused yourself.
I wanted to change the form to include if someone had been contacted from the city, who that person was, and that was it. That was it. Because I wanted to be able...can I finish this, Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I wanted to be able to have the opportunity to follow up with that city employee and find out through the city manager, why wasn't this person's needs or concerns addressed?
Maybe because they didn't call the person, real simple, and they just brought it up here.
Well, that's it.
Very simple.
That's all the form...that's all I wanted, to change in the form to include what the name of the person was, department that they had a problem with. That's it. That's all I wanted.
Mr. Resti...
That sounds reasonable to me.
I can bring you a whole bunch of problems all day.
Mr. Resti, all we're trying to do is make it better for the public to make sure their voices are heard on a particular issue or need. A lot of times, the public comes here, brings up an issue, a need, or a request, we cannot engage, we cannot respond. So, we're trying to make it to where if the issue, need, or request is made known first to the proper person, either the city manager or the director of the department, then it's a moot issue. It doesn't have to come before us and the issue's addressed. We want to address the issue, the need or the request, because we cannot respond at the time it's being made, and it's unfair because we don't have all the facts. And we have a city manager from the government who is in charge of the daily operations, not us, okay? And many of those things that come before us here could easily be taken care of with a phone call, sitting down with the city manager, calling the director of the department. We're here to serve, and that's what this form was all about, trying to make it easy to respond to those needs. That's all?
Okay, but it sounds like you don't want us to come up here and bring those issues. That's what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Not at all, Ms. Brutus.
Next, please.
Okay, I don't have a complaint on this one. I'm just here to get clarification and ask a question, okay? And I admire you for working on this. I know that it is difficult when you're rewording documents like this. By bringing the ordinance up, I noticed two things, and I just wanted clarification from you. First of all, on item C, under voting matters, it does say that items that have been voted on by the city commission shall not be placed on the agenda for reconsideration within six months unless a member of the commission or prevailing side of the commission member appointed or elected to commission since the matter was considered, makes a written request. Basically, the way I'm understanding that is that if you do vote on an item, you do have the ability to change it, sometimes either before six months or after. Is that correct?
No, what I understand is if I put an item on the agenda and it fails, I can't bring it up for another six months. I don't agree with it, by the way, but that's the way it is.
But it kind of looks like if the prevailing side changes direction, they can bring it up, and it could be brought before the six months. Okay, that was one question that I had, just one clarification on that. And then, under conduct of mayor and commissioners, you know, a lot of people watch the city commission meetings because they really care about what's happening in our community, and some of them watch it because it's more entertaining than a soap opera. I have concerns about the public comment period regarding the three minutes because I do believe everybody deserves their three minutes, but sometimes there are some commissioners, I'm not naming names, that interrupt that three minutes with personal issues, with argumentative things, which really just prolong the process. So, what I wanted to know is how much of the three minutes can be ate up by commissioners acting like that, because you other commissioners have the ability to have that person removed if they're prolonging the meeting or disruptive. According to this, comments of a personal nature or any other manner disrupts the orderly conduct of business.
I try to be flexible at times. When I see that's happening, we try to give the person a little more time.
And I've seen you attempt to control it, Mayor. I will take off my hat to you for that, I do see you attempt to control it. The only thing is, is that when it comes so long, you know, I know nobody likes to be the bad guy, but maybe that person should be removed so that you can get on with your business.
Yeah, but at one time, I thought there was going to be a fight here.
Yeah, I did, and... Well, I think the chief's here.
The police chief was ready to move in, and what I did, I just told everybody, calm down, let him vent out, let him say it. He got through it, and he went on his way. I mean, he obviously was real upset, very passionate, and he wanted to say it, so I let him do it. But the other choice would have been, yeah, have him removed. But then I think we created even a worse scene for us, and I think it didn't merit that. So again, as a chair, I kind of tried to control it the best I could. So as a chair, you know, I'm not perfect, but I try to take into account if the person's interrupting, to give them a little more time. If the person's being disrespectful, to let them know, "You can't do that." Sometimes they don't listen to, but we try to...
Oh, I know.
We try to control it.
But remember, sometimes that person's words can get the whole commission in trouble.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
The name is Letizia Perez Garcia. I had something else that I wanted to present, but I can't because I didn't get here on time. I have a knee surgery that I just had in December, and it makes me difficult to walk and get to the places that I need to on time. And that's why I can't formally speak, because I don't have a paper. But I was prepared to speak specifically to that issue, and I'm very concerned over that issue. And if I can pick and choose from what I have, it speaks to the issue.
This is a hearing on this form. If you have some suggestions, criticisms...
That's fine.
Whatever you want regarding this form, this is a draft. They have instructions to go back and work on it and then present something. You heard, the concept was to try to meet citizens' needs and address those needs or concerns or requests. That was the intent of the form.
Okay, I have nothing to do with the form, and I'm not a clerical person. I'm a nurse. So if there are concerns that I have, would be a disabled person, could they get here on time? What accommodations do you have for them? Does it even interest anybody? And that would be my concern as a nurse, okay? That is separate and aside. What I'm seeing here, and I'll go back to...
Let me tell you first, let me respond to that.
February the second... Excuse me?
We are ADA compliance. We have elevator, we have, you know, ramp, we have all those things to accommodate the handicap.
And therefore, you have more time for the disabled to get here, a couple of minutes or maybe three minutes or five minutes.
Well, the disabled...
Okay, I understand.
The disabled has a clock just like everybody else. They need to get here earlier.
Okay, that's fine.
They need more time.
Okay, so there's no accommodation? Thank you.
They have the same clock we all have.
Okay, thank you. Now, going back on the form, I have nothing to say about the form. I'm not a clerical person, but I will speak to one issue, and that has been kicked around by this commission back and forth. "Oh, let's put the public comments at the beginning." "No, let's put them at the end." "Oh, how about in the middle?" "Oh, no, you said. Let's not do that." "Let's make them wait until they hear all the agenda, so they have to see and they have to hear all of the commissioners." Excuse me, I'm speaking.
That's not on the agenda here.
No, I'm going to my point if you'll give me a few seconds. Okay? So you told this open, this open meeting and the whole public that you wanted to kick it around and so forth and so forth and so forth and so on, and therefore, it got muddled back and it got back to the same thing. So the bottom line in all of this and what I'm seeing here is you all are discouraging public comment. Case in point, Mr. Atkinson, February the second, and he said some very disparaging words.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Or a commissioner.
You're out of line attacking a commissioner.
No, no, this is to the point, because we're going on public comment. He was addressing public comment.
Ms. Perez, let me tell you. We're not discussing changing the public comments, so you're out of bounds here. And whatever happened sometime back with Commissioner Atkinson, that's something that's not being brought up here, and no personal attacks are allowed. I'm asking you to, you know, and it's my job. I hate to be the bad guy, but this is a good example of how things get out of control. If every individual were to be allowed to do what you're doing, come and talk about everything under the moon, we'd be here till midnight.
No, we're talking about public comment.
Now, this public hearing, unless, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, has to do with this form. Can you please...
Okay, well, let me finish, because I know that you have a full...
Stick to the point.
Okay. Then there was disparaging words, okay?
Excuse me, let me finish.
Against and discouraging public comment.
Let me finish.
Therefore, on March the third, on March the second, Mr. Mayor, you're trying to get public comment, but you don't want it.
No, you're not listening to what I'm trying to tell you.
On March the third, let me finish here. On March the third, speaking of Mr. Uresti's comment, there was no public speakers. And the mayor commented, "There's no public speakers," because not only was there a snicker, there was a loud belly laugh. There was a cackle. Absent were Commissioners Longoria and Commissioner Troyani. That's a discouraging thing for the public. I'm sorry.
You're out of order, Letizia.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Perez, you're out of order.
Well, isn't that public comment? Aren't we talking about what we were expecting and what we're not? It doesn't matter when you have the last word and the first word.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's it.
I don't understand you.
No, you're not following the rules. This is a public hearing.
No, because you don't like the rules when it comes to what you don't like.
This is what's discouraging for public servants, to come and be abused by citizens.
It's over.
It has nothing to do with that.
That's all I have to say. Thank you. Just, you are discouraging public commenters. Why? Because you don't like the content, and that's it.
Sign up for the public comment and comment whatever you want on the public comment, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just to correct the record, this is a public hearing on an ordinance. The only comments that are proper are those addressed to the ordinance. This is not public comment.
That's right.
It is not an opportunity for people to engage in public comment.
And that's what I've been trying to say, but apparently she does not listen.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
This is a public hearing. Mayor, you don't want to listen, madam.
Involving this form, I believe the reason this form needs to be changed or has been changed is because of an incident you talked about, where somebody came up and accuses of killing people on eight oh two, were the cause of some deaths on eight oh two, which was extreme, extreme disappointment, because this individual knows better. He knows we have been reaching out to Text Dot. And if he would have contacted a city employee and found out that we've all been working hard to get Text Dot to put that light in on Dana Road, on eight oh two, he would have known that. But he came up challenging us that we're killing people. I mean, we're all doing this for free, and for someone to come up and claim that we're killing people because we don't take action on trying to get a traffic light, then you know what? I'm glad Commissioner Somwata brought this to the table, because it needs to be addressed. Because he didn't reach out to anybody from the city before coming out and talking about his issue.
I understand.
Too bad.
More than seventeen months ago.
Okay, we've been working on that for eighteen months, on that... I remember that exactly, Commissioner Atkinson, and you're right. That was one of the issues that was, that brought it to the attention, trying to avoid some of that stuff, because it can easily be resolved by the citizen contacting the city manager, and that could have been worked out. Okay, Mr. Barrera, you're trying to say something?
My name is Mr. Roberto Barrera. And the only thing that I want to say is that you have been very polite to me. I have not been to embarrass anybody. You have not embarrassed me. You gave me a chance to speak. When my time is up, it's up, and I leave. And I think you people are doing a good job for the city of Brownsville. Now that you don't even get a salary, it's even a better job that you're doing. Thank you very much for all the time. Whenever the public comment period comes up, and if I have something that I really feel that I'm going to tell you, I'll come up, whether it's in the beginning, in the middle, or at the end. But I want to thank all of you for the work that you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we welcome your input on that form if you feel like you want to give us some input. Anything else regarding the form?
I helped out at the Golden Gloves about two, three weeks ago. I helped out, and that reminds me of my boxing...
I'm sorry, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Sorry to do that to you. We welcome the compliments. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item. Can I have a motion to table it?
So moved.
We have a motion table it by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. It will be tabled and brought back, okay? Item made. Item made.
Item made is public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and nine dash zero forty-four dash S to allow a general retail use in an apartment zoning for one point seven two five acres out of block twenty-nine of El Javín subdivision located at nineteen sixty-five Old Port Isabel Road.
I'm a mayor and city commissioners. In this particular case, runs the intersection of Dana Road and Old Port Isabel Road, applicant would like to have a pet grooming and a retail store that will sell pet supplies. The plans ordering commission voted to recommend this application to you for approval. As you can see there, you're...
You recommend approval?
Yes, they did.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Can we have anybody opposing it? Nobody's opposing it. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion to close with Commissioner Longoria. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item. Staff recommends to approve. Commissioner Longoria makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine.
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero one to rezone from light retail G to medium retail G for zero point eight five acres out of lot two of block one of El Chaparral Commercial Subdivision number one located near Alton Glor Boulevard and Stagecoach Street.
This particular case, Mayor, it's, the property's already zoned retail, but they wanted a third commercial retail, which deals with the side yards. The plans ordering commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you, and it's right next to that Stripe new store that they have at that intersection.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody opposing it? Staff recommends favor. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close.
Second.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor to close?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item.
Would approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item ten.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero two dash S to allow apartment G specific use in apartment F for block number nine of Omito Gardens subdivision of track number one located near FM eight oh three and Lomax Road.
I'm a mayor and city commissioners. In this particular case, this is a specific use. There's a site plan in your packet. This is to allow apartments in this tract of land. Plans ordering commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody against this? Staff recommends approval. Yes. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Samora. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item. Can I have a motion?
Would approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Camarillo. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Longoria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eleven.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash six zero two dash CU to allow a conditional use permit for sale of on-premise alcohol for lots four and southwest fifteen feet of block six of Rio Viejo subdivision located at thirteen thirty-five Palm Boulevard.
I'm a mayor and city commissioners. The property's shaded in red. It's on Palm. The applicant would like to sell wine with lunches, and the location's right in front of that plaza on Palm Boulevard. The plans ordering commission voted unanimously to approve.
What business is it?
Lola's Bakery, right next to Spanky's.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any opposition to this? What is staff recommendation? Approve. Okay, there's no opposition, so can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to close by Commissioner Atkinson. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Would approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Samora, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Everybody was notified, so let's move on. Now, we're to the public comments. Ms. Perez, if you signed up for public comments, this is the appropriate time that you can say whatever you want within the guidelines. This is the public comment period. Now, we have...
We have Mr. Roman Perez, Mr. Robert Uresti, Lou Garcia, and Roberto Barrera.
In that order. Mr. Perez. Assistant Secretary, what's this note for? Okay, Mr. Perez.
I know your name.
Welcome to our seat chair.
I wanted to talk to you about action item number twenty-eight in regards to the allied waste getting the contract for brush and pickup. I'm only talking about it because I'm not guaranteed that the mayor's going to recognize me later on. I know that last December or last November, I want to say it was December, there was raising the rates of our garbage and brush pickup was going to be raised based on the CPI or the Consumer Price Index going up. They hadn't asked for a raise or rate increase for a while. It looked to me as though many of you all didn't really like the fact that you were going to have to raise our rates because of this contract. The contract that it's going to be before you in action item number twenty-eight does allow for the CPI index to be used to increase our rates unilaterally because they want it. It also says in the contract that if, for whatever reason, the CPI goes down, our rates don't go down. They stay whatever, they stay the same, and I don't think that's really fair. You as a commission, or some of you as a commission, for the last few years have not given a pay raise to city employees, I think I want to say four or five years. I don't believe it's fair that we, as rate payers or taxpayers, give allied waste or any person who's getting this contract a raise every year based on the CPI when you do not give your city employees that kind of a rate increase. Tax rate, tax rate going up or down, you know, is beside the point. It's just, I hope that if you all were serious about this particular item not being in this particular contract, that you all would try to push for it or at least table the item, so that maybe you all can go back to negotiating table and negotiate this out in favor of not using CPI to go rate, for rates to go up automatically. Aside from that, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the planning issue with regards to the payday loan. I'm not for or against the issue. I just am for proper use of city time. I argue that if, for example, your city attorney is going to put an item on the agenda, that he at least try to contact your planning and community development director, he at least attempt to put an item in front of the planning and zoning commission, which I believe is guaranteed under chapter two fifteen of the Texas Local Government Code. I also believe that there should have been at least fifteen day notice of this particular ordinance change in the newspaper before you went to the planning and zoning commission. I don't believe any of this was done. If it wasn't done for whatever reason, maybe it was just oversight, maybe it was just a mistake, but maybe you should go back and make sure that these kinds of issues are done by your city attorney, by your staff, and it's just simple oversight. It's not me talking to that particular city staff for, "Well, did you do this? Why did you do this?" It shouldn't have to be that way. It should just be done by our city commission as overseers of our tax dollars. And that's pretty much it for now. Thank you very much for at least trying to listen or at least not just looking at your computer screen or looking at the sky, as some of you all tend to do when anybody comes up here and speaks. Thank you.
Mr. Uresti?
Roberto Uresti, twelve twenty, Calle Plutón. First of all, I received this packet this afternoon at four o'clock. It is a census. I already filled it out. It only took me two minutes, and I'll mail it this afternoon. And I'd like to ask the public to turn it in, because this will help the city in revenues in the future. And it has up to twelve people. It doesn't take very long to answer any of those questions. They're very, very simple, and it will be very, very nice. I think the city is promoting count everyone in the city. The second issue I'm bringing up is the public library on Central Boulevard. I did speak to someone there, and a request was made because of the lighting conditions there at the library. It is extremely dark. Is PUB or the city putting energy efficient lighting in outside the hallways, because it's so dark you can fall down? Another concern was the park next to it. The Veterans Park is completely dark. You have two major lights facing from central into the park. A lot of children, in bicycles, parents are there. They like to use the park as a walkway to lose weight, to do exercises. Yet it's so dark, and then the monuments where all the veterans' names are there. Somebody can hide there, and you cannot even see the person. It's that dark. There's a lot of lamps that don't give enough lighting in that park. So it will be very, very good. I commend the individual. I won't name the person that brought this up. This issue is not a last month, two months. This issue is long overdue, over a year. This is not something that just came out out of blue. So this issue has been brought up. It's been written up by this individual there, and I brought it up here to helping along, because I've seen a lot of children, even though they change the daylight savings time, we need to help the public, and this is a nice park to walk. It's closer than the sports park. It's a residential area. And then we have an elderly village right behind it. They can come and use it, and that will be the nicest thing for them to see there and take time. So it will be very, very important that we expedite this issue about the lighting at the library, not only at the library, but at the Veterans Park. I thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, welcome to our chambers. The people's chambers.
Hello, my name is Lou Garcia, and I live on Vermillion Avenue here in Brownsville, and I receive my mail on Central Avenue here in Brownsville, where I'm the director of an after-school childcare center. where I'm the director of an after-school childcare center. My husband and I have another small business named VTS, which is Valley Trophy Service, where we make various awards. I came before this commission on February 2nd, asking for your help to table an item, which I believe warranted further investigation due to some suspicious actions by the city's purchasing department. Again, I asked to table the item and not vote on the item until an investigation could be conducted. Instead of tabling the item, a very long and unorganized discussion took place, and I left this room without the help that I originally asked for from my city commission. I do wish to thank those three commissioners that did try and attempt to help me. Then I made an appointment and met with the mayor in his office to ask for his help a second time, which I did meet with the mayor. Today, the new ordinance brings new light, so I'm hoping maybe something can be done there. I've been watching the meetings that transpired since February 2nd, and on February 16th, one of the commissioners even laughed on camera, commenting about what took place regarding the February meeting agenda item, laughing about my request for help. It's not surprising that the February 2nd commission meeting video revealed at the end that that same commissioner seemed to personally be acquainted with the vendor on Morningside Road. As commissioners, you ran for public office, and you agreed to take the good and the bad that comes with it when it comes to public opinion and comments. Believe me, I wouldn't sit where you are at all. I do not envy you, and I couldn't keep my mouth shut to do it. To constantly interrupt the public people who come forward and try to speak is a travesty of justice. I am not a recycled person. And none of these gentlemen who come here on a regular basis and spend their time in addition to you, I believe are recycled people either, and I think that's rude. One of the commission's main complaints is that the public doesn't do its homework and check their facts before coming to the commission on the cameras. Well, guess what? I've done my homework. The Freedom of Information Act is a beautiful thing, and I'd like to share some stuff with you tonight that I've found. Through the Freedom of Information Act, I've obtained vital information such as one. One commissioner stated on camera that he had spoken with a competing vendor during the bid process. This is a violation of city policy, and I believe it's illegal. Two, that same commissioner raised his voice at me on several occasions during the meeting and attempted to belittle me for being a small business on camera. He compared me to a competing larger vendor and spoke openly regarding the volume of business with the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Independent School District. I am a registered vendor for the school district and have never been discriminated or belittled by the Brownsville Independent School District. Perhaps the city's purchasing department should consult with BISD regarding its procurement process. Three, here is a list of 1,293 vendors that do business with the city of Brownsville, of which 203 are located here within the city. That larger vendor, who was compared to me so many times, is not even a registered vendor on your own records. Another trophy vendor.
You're going to let her keep talking up to three minutes?
Another trophy vendor, who was a former city commissioner.
Excuse me, Ms. Gracia. She has a right to complain. She's not using names.
No, sir.
Is she out of order? Three minutes are up. Huh? I mean, she's within the guidelines. Is she not?
She's within the guidelines.
Yeah, she's within the guidelines, Commissioner.
I just got my three minutes.
She's not using names. She's not making personal attacks. I'm talking about the three minutes.
Okay. I didn't name any names, sir.
Did the bell ring?
Yes, it did.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'll be back next time, and I'll be sure to show you everything else I discovered from the city of Brownsville.
Thank you for coming. Okay, Ms. Gracia, next is Mr. Barrera. I hear the bell.
Yeah, my name is Dagoberto Barrera, and I just want to finish. Couple of weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, I helped out at the Golden Gloves that they held, they held the Golden Gloves for three days at the Gonzales Park. And it brought me a lot of memories when I was a fighter. And he was a good, a lot of people went, and Ms. Gracia tells me that they were successful in fourth work, that I used to go on the state tournaments. And I just want to help you, and if I can be of any help, since I'm already, I hung him up. I'm talking about my job. I got the time to help in any way I can. If I believe in something, I'll put in my two cents and everything that I have to do it. I want to tell you that you people deserve something, because now, you know, you're working without any compensation at all, and you are doing a good job in serving our community. Whether it's pro or con, they like you, don't like you, it doesn't matter, but as long as you're here and hearing the rest of us, I want to thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dag. It's nice to get a company once in a while. That's it for public comments, and we have action item thirteen.